All electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Mr. Majority Leader.
So like I wanted.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of December twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. I am Majority Leader Keith Powers. I'd like to thank everyone here for joining us. If you'd like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on the City Council website.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic which is theirs, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
Thank you. Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Barron. Botcher.
Here.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer. Brooks Powers.
Here.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias.
Present.
Felice. Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Joseph.
Here.
Kagan.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Milly. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino. Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan. Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Palladino. Vernikoff.
Present.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Juan.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Borelli. Powers.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We'll now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Rabbi Iris Richmond, the founder of Jewish Voices Together, located at two forty-four Union Avenue in Brooklyn. Welcome.
Let us together seek blessings from the Holy One, the Creator of light and source of all blessings, Yotzer Or, the one who forms light. Let us be able to truly see the light. From the earliest times in human history, in a variety of festivals that transcend time and space, people have felt the need to come together and celebrate light during this season of darkening shortened days. In fact, today is the shortest day of the year. As we feel light recede, we experience a calling during this time to seek out sparks, whether by celebrating the miracle of Hanukkah and the flames that continue to illuminate the Holy Temple, or by celebrating the birth of a child who brought enlightenment to so many, or by celebrating the light of the seven principles of faith and purpose. Yet, as many of us are experiencing and anticipating a festival of light and joy, let us remember that for so many, especially the vulnerable and some of our newest New Yorkers, finding that light may be a struggle, and the opportunity to bask in its illumination and warmth may be a miracle. Let us take on both, the joy and the quest for the bounty of blessings for all. In this season of rededication of the light, you, the honorable members of this council, have the opportunity and responsibility to define the values of this great city, to once again form the budget legislation, to determine how material resources should be distributed, especially for those who struggle to find the light, even the smallest sparks. In this season of rededication, let us remember the third principle of Kwanzaa, to build and maintain our community together and make our brothers and sisters' problems our problems and to solve them together. One of our challenges as humans is that we cannot always see the light. We can understand that the ability to develop that vision is a real miracle. May your creation of legislation be your discernment, enabling you to truly see, opening your mind and your heart. In Hebrew, there are many names and descriptors of God, which correspond to the way that each of us wants God to be present for us in the world. At the beginning, I called upon God as Yotzer Or, the one who enabled light to exist. But what is light if we cannot see it? So in addition to seeing God as Yotzer Or, the one who forms light, in Hebrew, we also call upon God as Pokech Ivim, opener of blind eyes. Let us ask for the ability to see what must be seen and to not turn away. Let us always remember that even in a season of darkness, when we join together and stand for right, we can always find that light, and let us all say, amen.
Thank you, and thank you for being with us here today. I want to now call on Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Rabbi Iris Richmond grew up in the Bronx and graduated from Hunter College High School. She is a member of the bar in New York and was ordained as a conservative rabbi by the Jewish Theological Seminary in Manhattan. She has worked to develop ethical standards to ensure that kosher food is produced with justice for workers, animals, and the environment, and she teaches in a variety of synagogues and Jewish organizations across the city. She is the founder of Jewish Voices Together, an organization that works to increase peaceful coexistence and unify Jewish action. She is also the very proud mother of my chief of staff, Anna Besendorf. I would like to thank Rabbi Richmond for being here today, and I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you, and welcome, and we always love a Hunter College High School grad as well. So thanks for being with us here today. We're going to now call on, have the adoption of the minutes by Councilmember Sanjong.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted as printed.
Thank you. We'll have messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
M one oh four, Comptroller's estimates.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Thank you. We'll now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Over the past two days, this council held a historic committee of the whole oversight hearing to examine the city's response and delivery of services to migrants seeking asylum. As I have repeatedly stated, New York City is a sanctuary city, and we welcome those seeking asylum with open arms and hearts. It is our responsibility as a city to provide them with services, resources, and the tools to build safe and dignified lives, just as we must for all New Yorkers who call our city home. We acknowledge the inherent challenges of addressing this unprecedented crisis, and we thank the hard work of municipal employees, nonprofit and community partners, and everyday New Yorkers who have stepped up to meet the needs of asylum seekers. These needs include shelter, clothing, food, physical and mental health care, education, transportation, language access, and legal services. Yet we know gaps in critical services and support remain. Last week, John Ortega, a twenty-six-year-old father seeking asylum, died by suicide, marking the second death of a migrant in our city's shelter system. We heard from public testimony yesterday that there are others who have attempted suicide. Because of the stigma around mental health, combined with the traumatic conditions that many face prior to and during their journey, it is especially important that we are proactive in providing culturally competent mental health care. As I said yesterday during the hearing, the council has an obligation to improve conditions across the shelter system, provide mental health services, and meet the vast array of needs of people who have already been through so much. We have to think creatively and work collaboratively to provide both immediate and long-term solutions. From the onside of this crisis, this council has sought to play a constructive role in supporting people seeking asylum in our communities that host them. We have recognized the importance of partnership and support from our state and federal governments while continuing to fulfill our role of holding city agencies accountable. We have also prioritized the development of solutions to improve policies and services by listening to and leveraging the input of community-based organizations on the ground, providing essential support. Today, the council released a new report outlining the challenges to effectively support asylum seekers and New Yorkers alike, paired with policy recommendations that can help address them. These policy solutions will benefit all New Yorkers, especially those who lack access to safe and stable housing or need culturally competent services. In some cases, our recommendations will be followed with accompanying legislation. These recommendations are organized by points in time on a migrant's journey, from pre-arrival priorities to needs upon arrival and long-term needs for those who decide to stay in New York City. Our policy proposals cover a range of ideas such as housing, economic opportunity, food insecurity, healthcare, and education. These policies can only be achieved with the partnership of the administration and our state and local federal partners. I look forward to working with my colleagues in government, community organizations on the front lines, and all stakeholders to enact these holistic and comprehensive reforms. By working together, we can improve the lives of migrants seeking asylum and all New Yorkers who are building a life in our great city. On a related note, one of the stressors of this crisis is the housing crisis facing our city. Last week, I unveiled my housing agenda, which provides a comprehensive set of housing solutions that prioritize equitable and responsible affordable housing development, deeper levels of affordability, and housing preservation. This year alone, the council has approved over forty projects to create more than twelve thousand units of new housing, with more than sixty-three percent being affordable. However, overall housing production has not kept pace with the growing need in our city worsening our affordability crisis. As part of this plan, I intend to introduce legislation to establish a citywide fair housing framework, which will create targeted goals for every community district to ensure affordable housing development is an equitably shared goal. At the same time, I rolled out a planning and land use toolkit, which provides guidance and tools for council members, communities, and land use applicants to successfully advance projects that balance important neighborhood needs with citywide housing goals. It places an emphasis on comprehensive planning that can make the land use process more effective, reliable, and responsive. It is my hope that the toolkit will help the council to continue advancing solutions that provide safe, stable, and affordable homes to New Yorkers. My housing agenda seeks to contribute solutions in this urgent moment that we can collectively advance through partnership across government. Before I continue, I want to express my support for our colleague, Councilmember Botcher. Two nights ago, he was targeted by hateful attacks at his home and his office, including alleged acts of trespassing. These vile actions are completely unacceptable. I've been disturbed by the ways in which homophobic and transphobic hate has become more frequent, along with other forms of hate. It is unacceptable and disgraceful, and we will continue to reject any attempt to normalize it. I, of course, send my love and support to Councilmember Botcher and the LGBTQIA+ community, and all of my council members that have been affected this term due to hate coming to their districts and their homes. We will continue to stand with you against hate and in support of your humanity. Next, I want to take a moment to remember the lives of two New Yorkers who died while on the job. Our city is mourning the loss of firefighter William P. Moon II, who was critically injured last week at his firehouse in Brooklyn. Firefighter Moon was a twenty-one-year member of the FDNY, who served our city with dedication and bravery. Our hearts are with his family, his friends, and his community. We're also grieving the loss of Lyndon Samuel, a construction worker who died last week while working at a building site in the Bronx. A native of the U.S. Virgin Islands, Samuel is remembered as a hardworking and loving husband and father. We extend our heartfelt condolences to his wife and children during this very difficult time. December fourteenth marked ten years since the mass shooting tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut. The loss of twenty-six people, including twenty children, is still incomprehensible. As we reflect a decade later, we must never forget the lives of the people who were taken much too soon from us. Colleagues, please join me in a moment of silence to honor them, firefighter William Moon, Lyndon Samuel, and others whom we have lost in our city. Thank you. Five days ago, on December sixteenth, we observed the fifty-first anniversary of Bangladesh Victory Day, which commemorates the independence of Bangladesh. I'm proud to represent Southeast Queens, which is the home to a flourishing Bangladeshi community, and we're grateful for their contributions to our city. I also want to recognize the historic representation of Councilmember Shahana Hanif, the city's first Bangladeshi and Muslim woman elected to the New York City Council. I hope everyone had a meaningful Victory Day. Tonight is the fourth night of Hanukkah, and as Jewish families across New York City and around the world gather to celebrate, I want to extend my warmest wishes for peace and joy during this season. As our Jewish communities continue to face rising antisemitism, it is critical that we uplift love and light over hate and darkness. On behalf of the New York City Council, kagh Hanukkah samerch. As this is the final stated meeting of two thousand and twenty-two, can't believe it.
We did it.
Yeah, we did it. I want to thank each and every one of my colleagues on both sides of this amazing aisle in the New York City Council for your hard work, your dedication, and service on behalf of all New Yorkers and your constituents. We've accomplished so much in our first year, and we will continue to work together to improve the lives of everyone who calls this city home. Colleagues, have a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, Happy anything else that may make you happy. Finally, please join me in wishing Councilmember Carmen de la Rosta a happy early birthday. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. Today, we're voting on several legislative rules and finance items. First, we will vote on the following appointments: Isabel Castilla as a member of the New York City Public Design Commission, James Van Bramer as a member of the New York City Public Design Commission. Next, we will be voting on the following finance items: a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon to amend a previous exemption for one building in Hell's Kitchen, and a transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. And we will vote on the following pieces of legislation, several of which came from proposals in my State of the City to increase park space in underserved communities, expand opportunities for New Yorkers with disabilities, and enhance language access. First, we'll vote on three pieces of legislation from the Parks Committee, two of which relate to improving the efficiency of the Parks Capital Project process, and one that focuses on expanding green space. Introduction one seven four A, sponsored by our Parks and Recreation Committee Chair, Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, will improve transparency and the sharing of information about Parks Capital Projects. The bill would improve the web-based capital tracker, which posts details about the status of each project by requiring the Parks Department to post additional information, such as the total number of projects in its portfolio, the reasons for any delays, the dates that projects were fully funded, projected and actual cost overruns, individual sources of funding, and the length of time it took to complete each project. Introduction eight forty-two A, also sponsored by Councilmember Krishnan, would require the Parks Department to prepare a strategy to identify ways to reduce the duration of capital projects by at least twenty-five percent. Some of the proposed ideas include implementing incentives for early completion, increasing the standardization of various processes, timelines, and forms, improving coordination with utility companies, and examining possible changes to regulatory barriers that slow the process down. The strategy would have to be submitted no later than December first, two thousand and twenty-three. And Introduction six eighty A, also sponsored by Councilmember Krishnan, would help the city identify more areas that can be greened or made into small parks. This bill would require various city agencies to survey dead ends, highway entrance and exit areas, and other city-owned vacant land, particularly in environmental justice communities, to determine the feasibility of planting trees or other vegetation in those areas, or possibly turning them into small parks. The survey will be completed by April first, two thousand and twenty-four, and would include an analysis of the condition of each surveyed site, as well as the feasibility of planting trees or other vegetation, or the installation of bioswales, small parks, or other green spaces for each site. This bill originated from an idea introduced in my State of the City address earlier this year, so I am so proud to see how it developed further from that foundation. We thank our staff, Chris Sartori and Patrick Mulvihill. Next, we will vote on legislation to help New Yorkers track our city's street cleaning efforts. Intro 630A, sponsored by Sanitation Committee Chair, Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require the Department of Sanitation, or DSNY, to equip all street sweepers with global positioning system GPS technology and ensure that the GPS is functioning during street cleaning operations. This bill would also require DSNY to create a page on its website where New Yorkers could track and confirm the completion of street cleanings. In addition, the bill would require DSNY to submit biannual reports for two years on city street cleanings and for the reports to be made publicly available on DSNY's website. We thank our staff, Jessica Steinberg Albin. Next, we will vote on a few bills expanding opportunities for New Yorkers with disabilities. Introduction 681A, sponsored by our Mental Health Disabilities and Addiction Committee Chair, Councilmember Linda Lee, would require the Department of Small Business Services, or SBS, the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development, MOTWD, and the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities, MOPD, to collaborate in creating and publicizing a workforce development program for people with disabilities in New York City. The bill would also expand the existing NYC At Work program by requiring SBS, MOTWD, and MOPD to maintain an online resource to connect employers and job seekers, including a current list of all vacant positions from participating employers. Introduction 682A, also sponsored by Councilmember Lee, would require the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities to work with every city agency to devise five-year accessibility plans from each agency no later than March fourteenth, 2024. These plans will outline the steps each agency will take over the next five years to improve physical and digital access to its workplace, services, and programs. Thank you to our staff, Sandra Suker and Kristi Dwyer. Next, we will vote on a language access legislative package. I am glad that the council is voting on these bills today to ensure that New Yorkers whose primary language is not English can receive the services they need. Introduction 136B, sponsored by our Contracts Committee Chair, Councilmember Julie Wong, would require an agency designated by the mayor to conduct a survey of community-based organizations to assess their capacity to provide translation, interpretation, and other related language services. Within one year of the bill taking effect, the agency would be required to produce a report detailing the survey's findings and recommend steps to remove barriers facing community-based organizations in providing language services to New Yorkers. Thank you to our staff, Alex Polenoff and Alex Yablon. Introduction 700A, also sponsored by Councilmember Wong, would require city agencies to translate commonly distributed documents that relate to the enforcement of local laws and rules. This would include documents such as the plain language summaries that are handed out to small business owners on business education days. These documents would need to be translated into each of the ten designated citywide languages, which are the top ten languages spoken by New Yorkers with limited English proficiency. Next, the Business Owners' Bill of Rights and the Food Service Establishment Code of Conduct are documents produced by the city that inform small businesses of their rights during inspections and other enforcement activities. Introduction 699A, sponsored by Councilmembers Sandra Ung, would require these documents to be translated into additional languages and include additional information about language access services provided by the city. In addition, the bill would require city agencies that regularly conduct inspections to report annually on the number of bilingual inspectors they employ. Finally, the bill would require the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings to provide small business owners with translations of written decisions upon request. Introduction 697A, also sponsored by Councilmember Ung, would help ensure that city agencies are prepared to serve large populations who are migrating to the city and do not speak one of the designated citywide languages. Going forward, if there was a conflict, natural disaster, or other event that is likely to cause a significant number of individuals to arrive in the city and seek city services, the Office of Language Services Coordinator would need to identify the primary languages spoken by those individuals and list those languages online. City agencies providing food, shelter, or other urgent assistance would then need to translate relevant documents and make interpretation services available in the languages identified. Finally, Introduction 382A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would provide in-language guidance to small business owners who receive a settlement offer from the city after being charged with a violation of city law. Specifically, the bill would require each settlement offer sent by the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection or the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to include a multilingual notice that informs the small business owner that they are being charged with a violation of the law and directs the owner via a QR code to a portion of the agency's website with plain language information about responding to settlement offers. Both the notice and the plain language information would need to be translated into each of the designated citywide languages. We thank our staff, CJ Murray and Erica Cohen. Thank you for your attention. Now I will turn it back into the hands of our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We're now going to move into the discussion of general orders. We will start with Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Before I talk about my bill, I just want to also express my complete solidarity and support for Councilmember Eric Botcher. Just want to let you know, we all got your back, and we stand with you and what you're doing to fight back. Today, we're voting on my first bill, Intro 630, which I'm calling Sweep NYC. This bill is pretty straightforward. We're going to put a GPS tracker on all the DSNY street brooms, and then New Yorkers are going to be able to track that in real time to see if their streets were actually cleaned for the day and keep an archive of it. So it's a pretty concrete, direct problem-solving bill, and I encourage all of you to vote in favor of it. And I just want to thank Speaker Adams for her support of this legislation, and thank my staff, Anell Hernandez, our committee counsel, our sanitation task force, and the committee as well for all their support. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. We'll go now to Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, and colleagues. Today is my honor to discuss two pieces of legislation related to the disabilities community. First bill, Intro 681, would codify a New York City At Work workforce development program within the Mayor's Office of Peoples with Disabilities that provides resources and direct support to job seekers and employers for the purpose of promoting employment to people with disabilities. And the next bill, Intro 682, would require the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities to collect five-year accessibility plans from each New York City department, office, and agency. And as a social worker formerly from the nonprofit sector and now chair of this committee, I've seen how the pandemic has disproportionately affected the nearly one million New Yorkers with disabilities. This legislation is about making good on the promise of equal access while helping the city on its economic road to recovery, and we just wanted to special shout out to all the advocates in the disability community whose voices were needed and appreciated during this long process of creating these two bills. And it's really proving what we already knew, which is that with technology, people who want to work in the community can work and should be able to work and now have access to that. Just wanted to say thank you to my staff, as well as our committee staff, Committee Counsel Sarah Suter, Senior Legislative Policy Analyst Kristi Dwyer, and shout out, special shout out to the folks in the front here from Mayor's Office with People with Disabilities. I just want to thank, I know she's not here, Commissioner Christina Curry. We have Assistant Commissioner Martha Jackson, who's with us, Council Emily Sweet, and of course, the rest of your team. So I just thank you for all of your hard work in helping us to get this passed, and I'm so excited that you're here. And of course, to Speaker Adams for making this a part of your State of the City agenda and pushing this through.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Wong, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you, Majority Leader. It is with a heavy heart that I speak today for Intro 136 and Intro 700. Intro 136 was brought to the floor two weeks after giving birth, and Intro 136 was stemmed from the death of a two-year-old, as well as his parents, when Woodside flooded from Hurricane Ida. And we heard directly from the loved ones of the deceased of how important it is that they have language access and translation, especially from the government in times of emergency, as well as for government services aftermath of such a tragedy. And now I am here, closing out the year, passing our bills for language access, and it is now a week since John Ortega passed away from committing suicide in a shelter in my district. When we talk about language access, it truly is a matter of life and death, and no matter how long you have lived in this city, whether it is for a week, a year, or eighty years, every single resident here deserves to be treated with dignity and honor and with deep love and care from our city government. And I know that with all of the support of the lawmakers here today, that we are here to make that difference, and with 136B and five million dollars in council funding, thank you to the speaker, as well as the mayoral admin, we will be creating the first ever in the country a language access co-op in partnership with local nonprofits, where we will no longer have to depend on a language access line that is out of state, so that when someone comes with an emergency with mental health needs and is contemplating taking their own life, that they do not have to be passed a phone to speak to someone in Ohio to be understood, but they will have someone who is culturally competent, who understands our city, who understands their immigrant experience, who knows local resources and how to reach them directly in their very own vicinity. And it will also create jobs for the local community members through this, the language access co-op, and Intro 700 would expand our language access law to require agencies to translate written materials when enforcing city laws and carrying out compliance, because we have heard directly from so many immigrants who find work in small businesses, that they need help understanding, especially during times of the pandemic, on what exactly is a new regulation. So I thank you so much to the speaker, as well as my team, and I just want to thank Lorena Lucero, Carlos Munchaka, Carolina Gill, Isaac Blazinstine, Kevin Kaprowski, Nancy Corona, Farah Salam, Seon Tenzin, and so many others for making this happen. Can I just add one more? Sorry. I also want to support the appointment of my predecessor, Jimmy Van Bramer, to the New York City Public Design Commission, and I know that former councilmember Jimmy Van Bramer spent twelve years and are serving Western Queens, as well as the city overall, and he will be bringing a vision of inclusivity, equity, and efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going now go to Councilmember Brewer, followed by Councilmember Krishnan.
Thank you very much. I'm going to talk about Intro 382. This bill would require each settlement offer by the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection and Health Departments to be accompanied by a multilingual notice. And why was that important? Because it's going to inform the recipient that they are receiving a settlement offer because they are being charged with a violation of the law. This is all for those who are not able to understand what they are getting. It directs the recipient through different mechanisms to the website about information about what the settlement offer does, but it's in language that they can understand. They have to be translated into designated citywide languages, the top ten. This is not new to me. In 2002, with then-councilmember John Lew, we introduced Local Law 73, I think, I don't know. That was the first mandated law, first law to mandate translations, and that was in the human service agencies. We know that half of New Yorkers, three point eight million of us, speak a language other than English, one point eight million are not English proficient, and more importantly, forty-seven percent of small business owners are foreign-born. We do have Local Law 30, city agencies are covered by it, and they're supposed to provide telephone interpretation in a hundred languages, but we learned at the asylum hearings that the speaker kindly called recently, committee of the whole, that that line is often overbooked. We know also that, and I think this is even more importantly, how busy 311 is, which is that one point one million 311 callers requested an interpreter in 2020. So these laws are incredibly important for language access, and I just said earlier, and I think that this body is, yes, very diverse, but might be the most multilingual, maybe more than Congress, State Senate, State Assembly, and maybe more than any other city council in the United States. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you. Now go to Councilmember Krishnan.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. Today, we will vote on three pieces of legislation from the Parks Committee, which I'm proud to be the lead sponsor. As we all know, our focus as a council has been to expand green space and access to green space for every New Yorker, and to do so from a standpoint of communities that have, prioritizing communities that have some of the least amount of green space in this city. We've seen how restorative and crucial our parks are, especially coming out of the pandemic. These pieces of legislation address a critical issue, which is how to expand green space and to do so more effectively and efficiently with the capital process that is much, much faster in doing so. I, and all our colleagues I know, have heard from so many constituents wanting to know more about when our parks will be built, if there are delays, why there are delays, and how we can speed up the process of building our parks and playgrounds, projects that we fund as a city council. Our first intro, number 174A, requires the Parks Department to expand on its capital projects tracker to include more detailed information, like reasons for delays, projected and actual cost overruns, and the time it takes to complete each project. Intro 842A requires the Parks Department to coordinate with other agencies to prepare a strategic blueprint to reduce the duration of capital projects by at least twenty-five percent. I'm grateful to have worked with the Playfair Coalition, New Yorkers for Parks, and organized labor, including Laborers Local 1010 and DC 37, in coming up with this legislation. Finally, Intro 680, which has been on the council's radar for years and was a focus of Speaker Adams' State of the City address this past May, this bill would require a city agency in office to conduct a survey of streets with dead ends, parcels of vacant land owned by the city, and land that abuts highway entrances and exit ramps to examine the feasibility of these sites for planting trees, for microparks, for bioswales, prioritizing environmental justice, and communities most impacted by environmental justice. I'd like to thank the speaker for her leadership and for bringing these bills to the floor for a vote, the committee staff, Chris Sartori, Patrick Mulvihill, and the legislative unit for all their assistance in drafting these bills, and my staff, Chuck Park and Greg Clark, for their assistance, and I urge all my colleagues to vote in favor of these bills. If we are to be a city that expands green space and does so equitably, these bills are a crucial part of the process to doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we're now going to return to messages and papers from the mayor.
Excuse me, M105, Budget Modification.
Report to special committees. Just hold on one second. Okay. We're going to return back to messages and papers from the mayor.
M105, Budget Modification.
Finance.
Report to special committees.
None.
Report to standing committees.
Report to the Committee on Contracts, Intro 136B, Language Services.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report to the Committee on Finance, Pre-Considered Reso 440, Transparency Resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered LU 154 and Reso 451, Property Tax Exemption.
Coupled on general orders.
Report to the Committee on Governmental Operations, Intro 382A, Settlement Offers.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intros 697A and 700A, Supplemental Language Access and Translation Services.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report to the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction, Intro 681A and 682A, Workforce Development and Five-Year Accessibility Plan.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report to the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intro 174A, Capital Expenditures.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 680A, Survey for Small Parks and Green Spaces.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 842A, Duration of Capital Projects.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report to the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, M101 and Reso 452, Approving the Appointment of Isabel Castilla, Public Design Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
M102 and Reso 453, Approving the Appointment of James Van Bramer, Public Design Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
Report to the Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, Intro 630A, Tracking of Street Cleaning Operations.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report to the Committee on Small Business, Intro 699A, Language Access for Small Business Owners.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
On the General Orders Calendar, Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Menon.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
I vote aye on all.
Abreu.
I vote aye on all.
Ariola.
Aye on all.
Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye.
Botcher.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Just want to quickly thank all of my colleagues for the incredible, incredible messages of support. I knew that this body would be there during this tough time, but it's even just blown me away, all the support. And, you know, this week has been such a story of contrast, starting with back on Saturday, just being at a library where you had families trying to go to the library with their kids out of love, met with vicious, vicious hatred and vulgarity and bigotry that escalated into people terrorizing innocent staffers at a district office, vandalizing property, making threats over the phone, visiting a block of private residents and terrorizing a block full of people and assaulting a neighbor. And I want to express solidarity with the other members of this body who've also been targeted, including Councilmember Krishnan, who his home was visited by these same people just this fall over his support for Drag Story Hour. So I know that we outnumber these lonely souls in so many ways, but we've got to continue fighting back loudly and publicly against this horrible, horrible bigotry, and I know we will in this body. I also want to congratulate Councilmember Nurse on her first bill about the camera, the GPS on the street sweeper. We had a lot of complaints about people complaining about their streets not being swept. That will fix this problem for New Yorkers. Happy holidays, everyone.
Councilmember, how do you vote?
Aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I want to just take a moment to commend my colleague, Councilmember Krishnan, for the package bills he advanced for passage today. Councilmember Krishnan has put forward bills to increase transparency and speed for capital projects in our parks. Many of us have experienced frustration with the timeline for parks projects, so many of which have been delayed and ended up over budget. Historically, we've also seen disparities in the investment in parks across the city. In recent years, the city has sought to invest more in underserved communities. These communities will benefit when new parks projects move more quickly. I hope these bills will lead to more transparency and more effective, efficient processes for parks projects across the city. I'm proud to co-sponsor these bills, and again, I thank Councilmember Krishnan for his work. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Kaban.
Congrats to CM Nurse. Solidarity always with Councilmember Botcher and my queer siblings, and aye on all.
Carr.
Just like to disclose on the record that we're funding CUNY in this transparency resolution, and my spouse is a student at CUNY, and I vote aye on all.
De La Rosa.
Aye on all and total solidarity with Councilmember Botcher.
Yes. Aye.
Thank you. Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Feliz.
Hi, everyone. First, I'm present. I was having some technological issues when the roll call was done. I am here and I vote aye on all. And I also want to tell my seatmate and Councilmember Eric Botcher and the entire LGBTQ community that in the city of New York, hate will never, ever win. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Thank you. Holden.
I vote aye.
Hudson.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan.
Aye on all, and I want to disclose that my daughter is a student at CUNY College.
Krishnan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to send love and solidarity to Councilmember Botcher. We will all stand together against this hate and intolerance and support Drag Story Hour. And with that, I wanted to vote aye on all.
Thank you. Lee.
Aye on all.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Milly.
Aye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye on all.
Nurse.
Aye.
Osay.
Aye on all and solidarity with Councilmember Botcher and all my LGBTQ colleagues who have encountered this hate and shame on a fellow member of this body who spreads vile, disgusting language that is very similar to the harassers that harassed your office in case of...
Please make comments in general, no comments about colleagues, please. Thank you. Councilmember, you vote, please. Kazar, I see you need to vote.
I said aye on all.
Thank you. Halladino.
Aye on all. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye on all. Congrats to the sponsors and love to Councilmember Botcher.
Richardson, Jordan.
Aye on all. Congrats to Councilmember Nurse on passing the first bill, and I love you, Eric. Sending love to you from District 12. Thank you.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Sanchez.
I vote aye on all and solidarity with you, Councilmember Eric Botcher, and all of the LGBTQ community in our city. We see you and we stand with you.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye on all, and I stand in solidarity with my LGBTQIA+ caucus members, including and specifically Eric Botcher.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Valesquez.
I'd like to disclose, my brother's a board member of Samaritan's of New York, and my husband is a deputy commissioner, DUP. Aye on all. And I love you, Eric.
Vernikov.
Aye on all.
Williams. Councilmember Williams. Juan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Aye on all, and I just want to voice my solidarity with Eric Botcher. We support you 100%, and I also stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ community as well as Drag Story Hour. And I also want to, again, voice my support for former Councilmember Jimmy Van Bramer, who was one of the first of the openly gay men elected to the city, who will bring a vision of inclusivity, equity, and efficiency to the Public Design Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaeger.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams. Borelli.
I vote aye on all, and would like to wish the Speaker, our staff, and my colleagues a great Christmas, or Hanukkah, or Kwanzaa, or whatever holiday you choose, and a Happy New Year at all.
Thank you. Powers.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I'd like to disclose for the record that I am a member of the Greater Allen AME Cathedral, and we are funding Allen AME Rockaway Boulevard Adult Center in this transparency reso. I vote aye on all.
Thank you. All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions. We will go to the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
There, thank you. There are no resolutions on today's calendar, so we're now going to move into general discussion. We will start with Councilman O'Reilly.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Happy first year to my colleagues in City Council. It's been a tremendous year. I come to you today as the co-chair of the BLAC Caucus because yesterday was a turmoil within our city government when we're talking about slashing funds from a very specific tool that we all utilize to get the quality of life within our communities, which is discretionary funding. Coming from the council in this state, one of the inquiries I used to get as constituent liaison was from a lot of nonprofits within our communities that do so tremendous work. And when we're kind of talking about slashing money from these nonprofits who have been stepping up during times where our communities and our cities really needed, I think we're doing a tremendous disservice to them, but not only to them, to the black and brown people that we represent within our communities. So as the co-chair of the BLAC Caucus, I think what the administration is trying to do to us and do to our communities is horrible, is distasteful, and is just plain right wrong. And if we're going to actually say that we care about our communities, I don't think this is the proper way of doing it. I think we spend too much time in government with creating enemies without gaining any allies. And if the administration wants an ally within the city council or wants to actually get some things done, I think they should come to the table and kind of have this discussion with us so we could kind of figure out the best solution for us moving forward. We know we're in a fiscal deficit. We know there's a lot going on. We actually took office after a pandemic. So with that being said, I think we should spend more time working together and stop utilizing tools like social media to fuel this tension amongst each other, because at the end of the day, the only ones that's being harmed are people from our community. So with that being said, I don't like to say too much, but that's just my two cents on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember Hudson, followed by Councilmember Joseph, followed by Councilmember Kaban.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know you were going to call me right away. So this is just in regards to the budget modifications, and especially given the past two days' worth of hearings with the asylum seekers, I would be remiss not to mention my concerns with the budget mod that was introduced for many, many reasons, because we know that we're still recovering from the pandemic. There's a lot of issues around mental health and the proposed peg, specifically the nearly $7 million being cut to mental health and addiction services at a time where the city has proven that we need to invest in mental health the most. We need to support our nonprofit organizations that are providing crucial services day in and day out, and just make sure that they're getting the, the communities are getting the resources that are much needed at this time, especially as we're still recovering. And so I'm committed to ensuring, as Chair of the Committee, I'm committed to ensuring more access to mental health services to all New Yorkers who need it and plan on supporting this. So thank you.
Thank you. And I go to Councilmember Hudson, followed by Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you. Slashing funding from vital city resources while simultaneously gutting the agencies that offer our neighbors care and support is wholly irresponsible and negligent. The proposed cuts in the administration's November financial plan and budget modification are illustrative of a mayor more concerned about waging political battles than truly getting stuff done. Despite IBO projecting a $2.2 billion surplus for this fiscal year and the federal government announcing that New York City will receive hundreds of millions of dollars in funding for asylum seekers, the mayor has turned his favorite tactic of cutting funding and stoking fear with xenophobic dog whistles. As it stands, our $100 billion budget already dedicates less than half of 1% to older adults, even though we have an ever-growing population of older adults, which is expected to reach 1.4 million by 2040. And three of New York City Aging's major programs have extensive wait lists with more than 1,700 older New Yorkers awaiting case management services and hundreds more awaiting home care services or home-delivered meals. Yet the mayor argues we can slash $12 million in funding for New York City Aging because he sees, quote, "less than needed case management services," end quote, and because we don't need to fill the vacancies he himself created. The cuts for older adults don't stop with NYC Aging. Everyday resources like libraries and cultural programs that provide safe, community-centered spaces that combat social isolation, digital illiteracy, and other systemic woes facing our older neighbors are seeing tens of millions of dollars gutted from their budgets. And to make matters worse, the mayor yesterday asked the council to slash $300 million in discretionary funding that goes directly to vital community-based organizations that supplement our city services. So I would like to reiterate what my colleagues have said regarding the budget modification. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilmember Joseph, followed by Councilmember Kaban.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Additionally, I want to reiterate my commitment to protecting public school funding. We were very proud of our agreement in the mid-year adjustment. With that being said, I will be keeping a very watchful eye, and I said that from the day one I became the Ed Chair, a watchful eye over the budget, education budget, as it pertains to education. Advocating for our students is my top priority, and I encourage all of my colleagues, which you have done, to join me in our shared efforts in improving our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilmember Kaban, followed by Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you. With the holiday season upon us, we're called to show kindness, generosity, and goodwill to all. And as temperatures drop, we as New Yorkers must especially extend heartfelt compassion to our homeless neighbors who are bracing for another brutal winter without the warm comfort of home that we here all enjoy. And before I tell you about a bill I'm introducing today in that spirit, I want to join my colleagues also speaking against the mayor's cruel and dangerous austerity program in general and his harsh budget modification in particular. I ask you, Mr. Mayor, how much more punishment can New Yorkers take at a time when the city prepares to end this fiscal year with a $2 billion surplus? How can you, in good conscience, slash jobs and cut vital services? How can you take away library staffing hours, CUNY professors, supportive housing, mental health services, and other programs that working New Yorkers depend on? And how can you blame these service cuts on the asylum seekers arriving in our city? We must remember that Christmas celebrates the nativity of a refugee child. His parents turned away from the only inn in town and forced to give birth in a wretched manger. Let us show our neighbors in need the grace and mercy we would show that baby. Now to my legislation, homeless New Yorkers need care, not cops. And today, I've introduced intro 856, partnership with Councilmember Osay, and the support of a wide array of organizations, including folks that do on-the-ground homeless outreach. This bill would mandate that homeless outreach be conducted first and foremost by nonviolent service workers trained in trauma-informed care and able to provide tangible support items like warm socks or a hot cup of coffee. And furthermore, it would prohibit the city from issuing tickets or summonses simply for fitting together bedding or temporary shelter. Homelessness is not a crime; it is a call to tenderness and empathy. And this is especially important as the mayor directs law enforcement agencies to force our struggling neighbors into public hospitals that are already overwhelmed and understaffed. Such a policy is the exact opposite of the benevolence and love this season calls us to summon within. And I urge my colleagues to show their holiday spirit, to support this bill, and oppose the mayor's austerity agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaban. I'm just going to quickly call on Councilmember Brooks Powers, who has to give a disclosure on the record.
I'd like to disclose that we are funding a program by the Greater Allen AME Cathedral, where I am a member. We also funding work with ESOTA, where my child participates in one of their programs.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilmember Kagan.
Thank you so much. I'm here to share that I oppose the deep cuts proposed by Mayor Adams's latest austerity budget reflected in the November financial plan and budget modification. Thank you to Speaker Adams and many of my colleagues for standing firm in opposing austerity budgets and calling on the mayor to strengthen investments in city services for New Yorkers. Despite the fact that OMB has reported $2.2 billion in higher-than-anticipated tax revenue, this budget modification is full of cuts. $61 million cut from the DOE, in addition to the $469 million not being reinstated, and almost $10 million cut from CUNY, all while we prepare to welcome thousands more asylum seekers into our city, many of which are school-aged children. We're also seeing millions cut from DYC, HPD, and other social safety net programs across agencies at a time when many agencies have vacancy rates of nearly 20%. Additionally, this budget modification exempts the NYPD from the 3% peg cut requirement demanded of other agencies, doubling down on the mayor's strategy of prioritizing a bloated police budget over the essential services that our working-class communities rely on. I reject this mayor's divisiveness and will not allow him to pit New Yorkers against one another. I look forward to working with you. on the mayor's strategy of prioritizing a bloated police budget over the essential services that our working-class communities rely on. I reject this mayor's divisiveness and will not allow him to pit New Yorkers against one another. I look forward to working with my colleagues for a budget that addresses the core needs of families, students from 3K to CUNY, provides dignity to asylum seekers, and invests in urgent social services to keep us safe and recover from the compounding crises. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilmember Kagan, followed by Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, I'm excited to introduce my new bill, Intro 860, that will reduce the length of the traffic studies conducted by the Department of Transportation from the current 36 months to 18 months. Traffic studies are very important for the safety of both pedestrians and drivers. When community board or council member request comes new traffic, for new traffic light, for pedestrian crosswalk, for stop sign, or speed bump, DOT usually conducts a traffic study. My bill, for the first time, codifies what traffic study is, will require to conduct for no longer than 18 months, and in case of negative result, to provide to council member and community board the written explanation of the denial within 14 days. This measure will provide more transparent and more efficient ways for Department of Transportation to respond to community concerns about road safety. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to just briefly go to Councilmember Williams, who is having technical difficulties but would like to vote.
Can you hear me now?
We hear you.
Yay. Hello, everybody. Thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to vote on the general orders calendar.
Seeing no objection, it's granted. Go ahead and vote.
Thank you. I vote aye on all. Happy holidays, everyone. Love you, Eric.
Thank you. And just to update today's vote, all items today have passed by a vote of 49 to zero to zero. We're going to go to Councilmember Nurse, followed by Councilmember Gutierrez, followed by Councilmember Osay.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Colleagues, I'm also extremely alarmed and concerned with Mayor Adams's austerity budget. Our city is still recovering from two years of unprecedented hardship. Our city's children are still facing ongoing social and emotional challenges. Our vital service providers and city workers are abandoning their posts and droves because they can't afford to work and live here. Our city government is barely carrying out critical functions to protect tenants, children, and family. Now, the mayor wants further cuts to key institutions that contribute to public safety and public prosperity such as our libraries, CUNY, and social services. It is unconscionable to balance our city's budget on the backs of the working class and those living in poverty. And in a time of worrying instability, we must double down our investment in people and in our public institutions. I hope now that we've all had almost a full year working together under our belts as we take time and a break and spend time with loved ones, that we really can rest up and prepare to come back next year and fight against this austerity. And we need to fight back as a council, and we can't let this man force austerity down our throats and on our communities. So I'm really looking forward to fighting back with all of you louder and stronger. And I'm really, really heartened to see so many colleagues speaking up today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nurse. We go to Councilmember Gutierrez, followed by Osay, followed by Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. It's been almost a year since many of us first walked into this building as first-time council members, and throughout this year, we've all stood on the steps outside with our advocates, allies. And we've sat right here and listened to New Yorkers recount their traumas of navigating our city's broken systems, hearing after hearing. I've listened. I've sympathized. I've collaborated. I've engaged. But I've refused to be indifferent. That's because I wasn't elected by my community to be indifferent. I'm a member of this body because I promised them that I would speak out against inequities because, like them, I know what it feels like to wait on the phone or a long line for hours to get benefits, only to be turned away or hung up on. So no, I will not be silent when New Yorkers, especially the most vulnerable, will suffer the consequences of millions of dollars of undefined cuts to social services, $20 million in cuts to ensure safe housing like NYCHA and supportive housing, over $13 million to our libraries, or let $9.7 million be ripped from CUNY. And I'm definitely not going to stand here when our schools are facing over $75 million in additional cuts. I'm speaking out because Mayor Adams's austerity budget is not in the interest of the residents of Bushwick, Williamsburg, or Ridgewood, or across our city. This budget is stripping the city's most vital social welfare infrastructures at a time when all we should be doing is investing heavily into them. I oppose the deep cuts proposed by Mayor Adams's latest austerity budget that contains devastating reductions with untold long-term damage to city services, especially while city agencies have double-digit staffing vacancy rates across our most critical programs, a problem that this mayor has only exacerbated in his short tenure. The truth of the mayor's austerity budget is not actually about a fiscal crisis. It's not about public safety, and it's definitely not about doing what is best for everyday New Yorkers. Some may say that this modification is just business as usual, but if we're not going to speak up against cuts to our most essential services right now, then when is the right time? I'm speaking out against the mayor's budget to make sure that I'm elevating the voices of my community and working families across our city. This is the kind of fight that we were all elected to have. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilmember Osay, Councilwoman Sanchez, Councilwoman De La Rosa.
I'm proud to join Councilmember Caban in introducing legislation to protect homeless New Yorkers. Our CARE NOT cops bill would take a data-driven approach to improve public safety without sacrificing the civil rights and dignity of our neighbors. People living on the street already face cruel conditions. We must provide them with mental health care and social service to get back on their feet, not subject them to state-sanctioned violence. The police don't even want this responsibility. They aren't trained for, so let's give the work to those who do. But suffocating social services is providing to be the administration's MO. June's city budget was a disappointment. Now, the mayor's proposed modification doubles down on his conviction to throttle our most vital institutions. Public servants and the public they serve will suffer. Our libraries cannot afford the $14 million-plus cut he seeks. Neither can our city. This mayor calls Bed-Stuy home, a community in which I represent. He knows the acute needs we face. He knows the crucial work for seniors, youth, parks, and sanitation that's done by local black nonprofits. And he knows his plan to cut a half a billion dollars from our discretionary funding will starve them. Our federal representatives did their job and secured nearly $1 billion in funding to address the migrant crisis. Now, it's time for Mayor Adams to do his. The bill we introduced today is a Band-Aid for a wound we should not have. Homelessness is a symptom of the same divestment from education and mental health care that has been degrading New York for years, a divestment that most members of this body ran for office pledging to end, and one that would be accelerated by this modification. A majority of this council has a sworn obligation, both to our constituents and to our own campaign promises, to resist these cuts and protect our city. The $2 billion surplus in our hands is an opportunity to invest in our infrastructure and our people. This body must act as a unified voice to stand up to the cruelty coming from the mayor's austerity budget for our constituents and for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilwoman Sanchez, followed by Councilwoman De La Rosa, followed by Councilwoman Ayala.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I join in strongly opposing the unnecessary deep cuts proposed by Mayor Adams's austerity budget that was shared with the council this year. My concerns are broad, yet as Chair of Housing and Buildings, I express particular concern today regarding cuts to our housing and social service agencies. $19 million in cuts to HPD would reduce assistance for rental subsidy programs, supportive housing programs, and emergency shelter operations at a time when eviction rates are the highest that they've been. Unacceptable. Reductions in city assistance to NYCHA? Unacceptable. Instead, we should be focusing on reducing sky-high vacancy rates in these agencies: 23% at DOV, 18% at HPD, and 29% within the Office at HPD, Office of Development, which provides the ability for New York City to build new housing. HPD needs more investment, not less. Thank you to our Speaker for releasing a housing agenda that acknowledges this. In social services, the high vacancy rates are felt on the ground. Constituents in my district that did not have a Thanksgiving dinner because of delays in processing their benefits. Unacceptable. Thank you for, Deputy Speaker Ayala, for holding a hearing on this critical issue. Low-income New Yorkers facing record levels of evictions without access to council is unacceptable. New Yorkers can't afford the untold long-term damage to agencies that provide housing, senior services, youth services, community development, parks, education, and other vital services for New Yorkers. Let's support one another, especially our most vulnerable in the greatest city in the world, home to the most diverse leadership, both in terms of personal backgrounds and lived experiences, to ever lead a municipality. Let's be that. Let's live that. Thank you.
Thank you. It's one of the people that we have about 15 more people signed up. So if you can be efficient, that is appreciated. We'll now go to Councilwoman De La Rosa, followed by Councilwoman Ayala, followed by Councilwoman Marte.
Thank you so much. I am a proud member of this body, and today, I stand in solidarity with my colleagues in the council and expressing concern about the deep cuts proposed by Mayor Adams's latest austerity budget reflected in the November plan and in the budget mod. Time and time again, programs and social services that our communities desperately need are on the chopping block. Double-digit vacancy rates plague many government agencies, negatively impacting our ability to deliver critical services to New Yorkers. We have been sounding the alarm on the alarming vacancy rates in city agencies that deal with social services, housing, education, human rights, and mental health. My office has received hundreds of housing cases and cannot provide tenants with adequate answers because we are still dealing with long wait times for interviews, and agencies take months to respond. Those wait times will only increase if these budget cuts continue forward. Agencies like the Department of Aging, the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, our public libraries, CUNY, our Parks and Recreation Department face budget cuts that will exacerbate existing issues impacting New Yorkers. Cutting these agencies will inflict great harm to New York City families, particularly low-income families that rely upon these city resources. Not only have the $469 million cuts to education made in the FY23 budget not been restored, but this budget modification seeks to slash an additional $79 million from our Department of Education's budget and the very social safety nets that keep many of these families afloat. Yesterday, we heard the mayor threaten our nonprofits with a 50% cuts despite the work that they've done to keep our city running in the midst of compounding crises. Without the help of organizations like NIMIC, the Dominican Women's Development Center, Cabrini Shrine, and countless others in my own district, asylum-seeking families coming to our city would not be able to have their needs taken care of. This is not a moment for us to allow vulnerable communities to be pitted against each other for critical services they need. With a surplus of $2.2 billion in the current fiscal year, these cuts are not necessary and threaten the very livelihood of New Yorkers. I stand in opposition to these cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilwoman Ayala, followed by Councilwoman Marte, followed by Councilwoman Velasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. I think I really, I stand in awe. I'm just, you know, so disappointed with the proposed cuts to this year's budget modification. I think we've all seen, and this week, if you haven't been watching, we've held a number of hearings where we heard directly from providers that are on the ground, that are servicing asylum seekers coming into New York City, who shared stories with us about not being reimbursed for, you know, things such as food. Most, you know, but most, if not all, of these individuals that are coming into the city have, do not qualify for government aid, and they're not getting SNAP benefits. And that means that these providers are having to come up with breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and snacks. And that has resulted in, you know, families eating sandwich after sandwich after sandwich. And so, yeah, you can say that we're feeding people, but I guess the devil is in the details. What exactly are we feeding folks, right? There is no money for that. I'm just, you know, really disappointed because we're, it seems like we have contradictory information coming from City Hall. We have a housing plan, and yet, we're making cuts to positions that would staff HPD for inspections, for legal services that would ensure adequate representation in court. We have families that are not receiving SNAP benefits because the rate of application processing is at 46% because of the, you know, every single agency is shorthanded at this point. And instead of trying to figure out a solution to higher up the proposals just to eliminate these jobs, without any assurance that they're going to ever come back. So, you know, as the Chair of the General Warfare Committee, I can't fathom cutting back on any crucial services like housing, homeless services, domestic violence prevention, and services for crime victims, especially now when our city is faced with multiple overlapping crises. As someone who has been on the receiving end of these services, and I know how critically important and even lifesaving these services are. As a body, we have a responsibility to ensure that we equip our local nonprofit service providers with the tools that they need to effectively provide services that our constituents know and trust. We should be rightsizing those budgets, not cutting them. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilwoman Marte, followed by Councilwoman Velasquez, followed by Councilwoman Brewer.
How can our mayor stand and say New York City is back? How can he stand and say we're a city of yes, when he's saying no to the most vulnerable? When he's saying no to parents who are looking for 3K spots in their district? When he's saying no to CUNY students who are going to lose their teachers? Who he's saying no to every single one of my colleagues here when he says 50% cuts to the nonprofits, after-school programs, community organizations that make this city run every single day? The reason why the city is bouncing back is because we're investing in it. These cuts are horrendous, and it's only going to take us backwards. I'm really proud to stand with a lot of my colleagues and the Speaker in saying no to these cuts and continue to invest in our communities, especially the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilmember Velasquez, followed by Councilwoman Brewer, followed by Councilwoman Krishnan.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to take a moment to speak about the mayor's request for the council to reduce the funding we allocate to nonprofit service providers by 50%. Local community-based organizations are essential to the health and well-being of our neighborhoods. They are embedded in our communities and do the hard work of reaching people in places where access to essential services can be difficult. We rely on our nonprofit partners like KIPSPAY, Boys and Girls, Northeast Bronx Senior Center, Destination Tomorrow, and IDC. We rely on them to serve New Yorkers just as they rely on us to support their work. Our city's children, homeless youth, elders, and immigrant communities all need our continued investment. The council is focused on delivering resources and essential services to New Yorkers who are currently experiencing the compounded negative effects of overlapping crises. We cannot abandon our nonprofit and community partners when they need our support the most. The suggestion to pull funding from already underserved populations during difficult times makes it clear that this administration has more work to do. They need to see firsthand the vital role that community-based organizations play in keeping our communities healthy and safe. We encourage the administration to come to our communities, to meet us where we are, to see the positive and lasting impact that these local organizations have for New Yorkers.
Thank you. We go to Councilmember Brewer, Councilwoman Krishnan, and Councilwoman Vilas.
Thank you very much. Believe it or not, this is 20 years in elected office for me at the end of December. And I have worked before in the mayor's office. I know that in a previous mayor's office. And these are tough issues, and I appreciate the administration reaching out. But it was a surprise that the mayor, and I think it was actually a surprise to some of his staff people, that he's asking for half of our allocation, half of $563 million, when the money that we allocate, and I know this is true of my colleagues, I can certainly say that every dollar I have allocated keeps the community safe, keeps it clean. And of course, if I had my way, the libraries would be open seven days a week for many, many hours. That's what we should be doing. In my case, positive influence works with people who live in NYCHA, with basketball, with young people, keeping them off the street. Greenkeepers run by Garden Riverside works with young and older individuals who have mental health challenges and are able to work, and they keep our streets clean. They supplement what Department of Sanitation does. We have to work. If I had my way, I would give a lot more money to the mental health organizations. Right now, they have a 40% vacancy. Now, I know this is always told across the country, Gail, everybody has the same issues. But you know what? We're New York. We should be doing things differently. There's no way that those mental health organizations should be without money. So what have we got to do? Mr. Mayor, be more transparent. How much do those tents really cost? How much does HERCA really cost? How many more U of As can you please provide? The baseline, many more agencies that actually bring in money should be baselined with their staff budgets. They weren't in your budget. I know there are big problems, but you know what, Mr. Mayor and your administration? You cannot do it alone. You need us. We need you. And that's the way we're going to solve the problems, and it's the only way we're going to solve these tough issues. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilwoman Krishnan, followed by Councilwoman Vilas.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just wanted to lay out some basic math and facts. Revenue is going up. Revenue is going up. Needs are going up. That was before, as we revealed during our hearing, that needs are going up at a remarkably fast rate, given the asylum seekers who are coming here. Yet, we are facing a budget modification that slashes spending, a proposal to cut funding from the council that supports the very groups on the front lines who are doing the work every single day to support our asylum seekers who are coming here, especially where city agencies have failed and don't have the capacity to do so. I look at a budget modification, among a number of problems, I see one, an elimination, among many other pegs, of two hundred vacancies at the Parks Department, cuts to CUNY, and higher education. I also see cuts to our libraries, critical institutions for our communities. And especially egregious, as if they all weren't egregious, but especially egregious is the cuts to three K. And no amount of explaining, like right sizing or anything else, could possibly explain why we would cut back on an early education program that must be universal, that clearly has shown benefits for children for their entire lives. Yet here we are, facing a number of austerity measures in this modification that are utterly outrageous. At a time like this, in the crisis that we face now, with revenue up as well, the fact that we would be looking to cut crucial city services, cut from agencies that provide those services, cut from organizations that are doing the work every day where those services are failing, is absolutely unacceptable. If anything, in a moment like this, especially when our revenue is up, we should be spending more, and much more, to support those who are desperately in need of help, who are coming here in desperate need of help. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Velasquez, followed by Councilwoman Narcisse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. For the past year, we have fought hard to protect our public school system, a system that serves more than one million New York City children and youth. We have fought to protect the thousands of educators that work in it, a workforce of the city that is doing their best under extraordinarily difficult circumstances. And yet, despite our efforts, the mayor slashed school budgets, excess teachers, cut programs, and then tried to gaslight parents and New Yorkers. The mayor claims to get stuff done. We should all be asking, what does this stuff mean? Allow me to clarify what some of this stuff that is being proposed in the mayor's latest budget modification proposal. Cutting another seventy-five million from public schools, cutting thirteen point six million from libraries, cutting nine point seven million from CUNY, cutting more than twenty million from the New York City Public Housing Authority. There is no reason for these shameful cuts to these essential services that support working-class New Yorkers. When we will end the year with a two point three billion dollar surplus? Blaming migrants is a shameful lie. The mayor has demanded these cuts since January of this year. This modification is not about fiscal prudence, it's about shifting resources to the mayor's priorities and avoiding democratic accountability. We will not allow the mayor to pit neighbor against neighbor to justify destabilizing our communities. I will not allow the administration to engage in rhetoric that is not only untrue, but that stokes fears to convince us that there is only one path to take. My colleagues and I are here to forge another path. We know that community safety starts with investments in education, libraries, public housing. The council is a co-equal branch of government. Let's act like it. We say no to Mayor Adams' fear city. I oppose these deep cuts proposed by the mayor's latest austerity budget, reflected in the November financial plan budget modification. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Councilmember Farias.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Madam Speaker. As you all know, our city continues to battle a serious COVID pandemic, with over three thousand cases being diagnosed per day, and the possibility of tri-demic with dramatically high influenza numbers and ISV, which is still prevalent. Couple this with crippling staffing shortages, and in our hospital, I'm in desperate need of lifeline, some of them are on life support, and New Yorkers' lives are being put at risk. I understand we are facing some difficult economic choices, and cuts unfortunately are inevitable, but I ask my colleagues to carefully consider the impact of any cuts to our healthcare system. And recall the height of the pandemic in 2020, when ambulance noises refused to let us sleep. We cannot go to sleep because of the noise, and we know one person or two folks are going to the hospital and not going to come out, when we all clearly understand the need to reinforce and strengthen our hospital. As far as the mayor, when you want to go alone, when you want to go fast, you go alone. When you want to go far, you go together. But I recall when you came, you said you want the city a better city. But who knows their community best? The city council, each of us, are in the side where we know what's going on, we know where the inequities are located, we know where to put the funding. This is us, the mayor, and we are part of a system where we're going to keep you accountable, and you have to be responsible. And right now, we're talking about the inequities in a black and brown community, they are on life support, most of the organization. So if you continue playing that game, there's places to play game, but certainly not people's lives. As far as I'm concerned, we are here to come to work. I have been a nurse for over three decades, I have been in business, I have been around, but Mister Mayor, this, the city council, with the leader of Madam Speaker, Adrienne Adams, we have been working so hard every day diligently to make sure that the city of New York and the needs of the city of New York is being addressed. We're not playing game. We are serious, and you have to stop your game. And happy holiday off.
Happy holidays to you, Councilmember Narcisse. We'll go to Councilmember Farias, and then we have Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Brooks Powers, Councilmember Wong. And then we go on break.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues regarding their statements on the mayor slashing our budgets. As co-chair of the Women's Caucus, it's appalling to me that this request is being made of the council. At a time when access to abortion and reproductive health care are under attack, we cannot afford attempts to cut funding from the organizations that provide these essential services. Women still make a fraction of the wages men receive, and we know the nonprofit service providers that support women and families are the backbone of healthy and safe communities. Community-based organizations are filling the gaps in critical services that the government is failing to provide for all New Yorkers. Any suggestions to strip vital resources from the council's women's initiatives is insulting and dangerous, especially after we took action to provide access to abortion health care through this funding. If we are serious about promoting maternal health care, protecting access to abortion and doula services, supporting survivors of domestic violence, and fostering leadership among women, among young women, the city must honor its commitments to support service providers. Drastic and shortsighted cuts to committed investments will only harm and undermine our communities and their recovery. And I ardently oppose that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Brooks Powers, and finally, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to express my strong opposition to the mayor's austerity budget modification. I am truly heartened by the words from my colleagues, and appreciative of the leadership of our Speaker. And I have to ask, when do we say enough? When will we no longer go along with this mayor? When will we stop signing off on his draconian policies? We have a budget surplus to date this fiscal year. There is no need to be cutting libraries. There is no need to be cutting CUNY, our engine of socioeconomic mobility. We should not allow for another penny of cuts to our Department of Education. No more cuts to supportive housing, no cuts to mental health, no cuts to early childhood education. We must fight back. Last week, at Councilmember Ayala's hearing for the General Welfare Committee, the HRA Administrator noted that not in her forty years of service have we had so few staff at our anti-poverty agency. We are failing to provide food stamps and public assistance to vulnerable New Yorkers because we have slashed funding for city government. We cannot starve this beast. It is clear that the mayor's five years as a Republican are more indicative of his politics today than any other period in his life. He is more aligned with our colleagues on the Republican side of the aisle than this Democratic conference. We have to fight back. Today, he said that he wants our discretionary funds to be used instead of taxpayer, instead of the taxpayer dollars currently being used, to give migrants things like MetroCard. That is offensive and wrong on every level. We are proud to welcome immigrants, and he might want to realize that discretionary funds are also taxpayer dollars. So we are all here together to support New Yorkers in need, and it's time that we fight back against the mayor and his austerity politics once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Brooks Powers and Councilwoman Wong.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that I'm introducing several bills today. First, Intro 855, which I'm proud to prime sponsor alongside co-prime sponsors Farias and Caban. This bill closes a major loophole in the city's campaign finance law. Currently, independent expenditures in support of opposition to a candidate are subject to reporting and notice requirements. These spenders have to be transparent about where the money is coming from, but those that spend money on ballot proposals aren't subject to these requirements. This law would get rid of this discrepancy and improve transparency in our local elections. The second bill I'm introducing today is Intro 854, which would require DOT to daylight a minimum of one hundred intersections annually, with a priority on intersections that experience more crashes each year. Daylighting means preventing parking near an intersection. This allows drivers and pedestrians alike more visibility at crossings and discourages drivers from cutting corners quickly. Data suggests that installing daylighting features improves street safety and reduces the likelihood of an accident at our intersections. I'm proud to be introducing these bills and encourage my colleagues to join as co-sponsors. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I just want to stand in solidarity with my colleagues in speaking out against the budget mod austerity measures, because it's clear, when you take funding away from resources, especially for nonprofits that are contracted out to do the work that our agencies simply are not able to do right now, there are real consequences. We just had someone pass away from suicide because they were not able to receive mental health services in their language or just overall. And we just heard from the Chair of Mental Health of how important it is that we do not cut funding for mental health at this moment. So in addition to everything that we heard of DOE having eighty million dollar cuts, CUNY having twelve million dollar cuts, and so much more, we cannot stand by as the mayor now is proposing that we cut five hundred sixty-three million dollars from discretionary, which is already, what we have said, is barely enough to serve our city. And every single one of us would use our discretionary funding to help our neighbors in our own districts, and we cannot stand by as he continues to make these threats. This is not a mayor for the people, and this is truly not acceptable. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we have anyone else signed up? I think everybody took their time to speak today. I just want to echo many of my colleague's sentiments about what's ahead in 2023, but also want to just say a very big thank you to the Speaker and all the staff here for a very productive and challenging 2022. We know 2023 is filled with many more challenges, but looking forward to serving alongside everyone, and thank you for a very productive year. With that, I'll give it back to Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I wish all of my colleagues a happy, healthy holiday season, prosperous new year. Let's get it together. We've got a lot to look forward to in 2023, and I can't think of a better group to do it with. God bless you. The stated meeting of December 21st, 2022 is hereby adjourned.